Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Marin City Council Workshop Wednesday, May 8, 2024. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please show all members of council present. We have the reading of the minutes from the April 8, 2024 closed session. On April 8, 2024, at 7:58 PM, the city of Tawny Town made a motion to hold a closed meeting made by council member Foster with a second by Tillman. Councilmember Tillman carried five zero. In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, subtitle five, Meeting Section 3-305B, this meeting was closed in order to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Topics discussed were employee compensation, compensation for specific individuals, light duty for Department of Public Works employees, persons present at the closed meeting were Mayor Miller, all council members, city manager, attorney Gallow, and clerk Coleman. No actions were taken. And then a motion to adjourn was made at 9:00 PM by Foster with a second by councilmember Chaney, carried five zero. Next up, we have reception and delegation. If I Were Mayor essay winner Yodit Willett, if you would please come up. I wanted to check, did you want to first read your essay so everybody in the audience could hear it?
Sure.
I'll let you guys go on that.
If I were mayor, I would host carnival events, but I would also recycle, I would also encourage people to recycle more. Then I would make special playgrounds for people with special needs. I would be open to many ideas, people said, and I would make sure the fire and police department had everything they need to have a successful job. I'm encouraging everyone to be a leader and have some sort of leadership. Then I would make a shelter where poor people could live until they had enough money to buy a home or rent something like an apartment. I would make sure everybody felt safe and secure. I would make more playgrounds and parks for people and dogs. Plus, I would also welcome new families so they felt content where they were. I would encourage people to get out of the house more and play outside at parks. I would also bring joy to people when they were down. I would make sure everybody had equal rights and opportunities in the town. Then I would also raise money for shelters so dogs and other pets could find loving families. I would make fun contests so you can enjoy, plus it gets you out of the house. I would also make the town a better place by providing things that will help people build a strong foundation that works just love, not fear. I am encouraging you to be the best you can be for you, not for anyone else but you. That's what I would do if I were mayor.
I have a certificate to award to you. I'm going to read it off first and then I'll ask you to come on up. Tawny Town Certificate of Recognition. This certificate is proudly presented to Yodit Willett, a student of Miss Smith at Runnymede Elementary. In recognition of your imaginative and compassionate vision shared in your If I Were Mayor essay, your thoughtful proposals ranging from enhancing recreational facilities to strengthening our community support systems embody the spirit of civic engagement and leadership. Your emphasis on hosting fun community events, improving recycling efforts, and creating inclusive playgrounds highlights your commitment to making your community a welcoming and vibrant place. Your dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of all of our citizens, especially through the support of our fire and police departments, aligns with the pillar of good governance, which is providing exemplary public safety and supporting those who respond first. Furthermore, your initiative to establish shelters and support services for those in need and your focus on equal opportunities for all residents illustrates a profound understanding of the responsibilities entrusted to us in public service. The city of Tawny Town commends you for your creative and forward-thinking ideas that inspire us all to contribute positively to our community. We look forward to witnessing the continuation of your leadership journey and the impactful changes you undoubtedly bring to our society. Thank you for your interest in local government and I want to do good by those around you. Thank you. Wonderful essay. Tawny Town Community Partners, Kenyatta Brooks and Dr., pardon if I say this wrong, BoShawn Wilkerson. You guys are free to approach.
Hello, how are you? How's everyone tonight? That's amazing that she wrote that, Mayor Chris, because I'd have to say that is exactly what you're trying to do, and we thank you for that. Well, good evening, Mayor Chris and council. My name is Kenyatta Brooks and this is Dr. BoShawn Wilkerson. We're with Tawny Town Community Partners. We're a component of the Foundation of Carroll County, which makes us a 501(c)(3) organization. I will speak to the Resource Center, which is across the street, which is the Tawny Town Community Partners, and then Dr. Wilkerson will speak to one of our major partnerships inside of the community, Tawny Town Community Partners. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I appreciate that. Thank you for allowing us to be on your agenda, and thank you for allowing us to speak with the citizens here in Tawny Town by using your platform. We're here to streamline resources and information. Sometimes when we come up with visions, and this is anyone, sometimes it's through prayer, sometimes it's through strategic planning, sometimes it's through tragedy, loss, love, kindness, as the young lady just wrote, words of kindness. Part of our mission is to provide the citizens of Tawny Town with a wealth of resources and information. Oftentimes, we don't get that for one reason or another. I don't know, it's because we don't read or it's not available. Some of us don't have resources to television, to internet, to computers, to transportation, and we want to include the citizens with compassion, equality, and equitable interest. Although no Carroll County resident would be turned away from our community partners there in Tawny Town, our goal is to partner with all the community, okay, all of them at large, existing agencies, nonprofits, organizations, businesses. We're looking to work with our citizens in our community who may want to volunteer in partnership with us. There's lots of people here in Tawny Town that has so many skills and so much to offer Tawny Town that we're not aware of it because we're all busy in the hustle and bustle of life, and we want to just make sure that we're all inclusive and equitable in things that we do going forward. One of our goals is to streamline resources and information in a prompt way by assisting the citizens that are in need through fax machines, however that might be, computers, social media, phone, direct contact. We are in process of getting a grant library there at our community, Tawny Town Community Resource Center there. We're not here to replace anything or anyone. Everything will be as it is. We're just here to partner and make more available with the resources that are already here. Example, there is a fund, Potomac, for the citizens of Tawny Town. We met with human services, a couple of them, there's so many different entities of human services. It's funny that she mentioned shelter and housing because that is an entity. They give funding to landlords that will house people who are homeless. And recently, as you guys know, we have had recent homeless people here in town, and they will give funding to those landlords to house them. That's one. The Potomac is another, to help citizens who are having trouble paying their Potomac Edison bill, not the human resources, human service fund, but it's Potomac Edison Direct. And what they told us is that they cannot find any recipients in Tawny Town. It's for Tawny Town. Why is it not? And the fund is growing and we don't have any recipients of the fund. So that is something as well. We're going to have a soft opening on June 1st from 11:00 to 2:00. You're all welcome to come. We're just going to be there, we're just going to be hanging out doing what we do, and that is talking to the citizens, seeing what the needs are. We will have some needs assessment paperwork available for people to complete and fill out. If you are a resident of Tawny Town, no one will go turned away. You know, we have the new food bank here in town. A lot of people know about it, a lot of people don't, and it just recently opened. So I think within the last year, and this is something that Dr. Wilkerson and I have been working on for almost a year now, I think if Darryl was here, he could tell us, but we've been pamp for everything there and out of our own funds. So that's a community that knows that there's a need. We know there's a need. I've lived here for 24 years, and I hear things and I see things. I've raised all these kids here in town, and it's so much, and we're a unique community. You say, when I first moved, they said, "You live in Tawny Town?" Oh, my goodness, that's a trashy place. No, we're a great place to live and raise our kids and be safe, and they think folks in Tawny Town don't have money, or we have money. We may not be as extravagant as everybody, but we are a middle-class working community, and I'm proud of that. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony with the Chamber of Commerce to be held on August 24th, which is another Saturday, and our date, not our date, but our time, we're going to announce that later because we have some surprises possibly in place that we have to confirm with. And that's all I wanted to say, and I just want to say thank you for allowing us to use your platform.
Can you tell me again where you're located? What's the address?
52 East Baltimore Street. It's right at the storefront. That's there, right at the crosswalk.
Okay.
Matter of fact, there's some mannequins in the window now, so I'll let Dr. Wilkerson speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, city council, for having us. I'm BoShawn Wilkerson, and I'm here to talk about the nonprofit foundation started by myself and Kenyatta Brooks. Our foundation is called Our Breast Friends, and our goal is to pair individuals together for the purpose of support and accountability in getting timely breast screenings such as a mammogram, or an MRI, or an ultrasound. We hope to bring the women together in a partnership so that they can cheer each other on, reminding each other when they are due for their screening, and if possible, even go together to their appointments. This routine worked well for myself and Kenyatta, and I'll just briefly diverge just for a moment. In 2021, we had gone, as we always do, for our mammograms, and we went together, as we always did, and in December of that year, I got an unfortunate diagnosis of breast cancer. And we were right there together through all of it, going with me to my appointments and through all the tears and the laughter and the fears, you know, I had my partner here, my breast friend. She was my best friend long before that, but we also became breast friends. And so we continue to cheer each other on and go together to our appointments and make sure that no one falls through and says, "Oh, I don't have time for that this month. I've got to reschedule." Nope, going to make sure you don't. We're going to go together. And as I said, that worked really well for us, and we would like to pass that on, that kind of a routine to other people and encourage them to do the same. And then I want you all to know about our motto. Our motto is each one, take one. So, and in doing that, we're making sure that those who are afraid and have never had a mammogram, or have one, or have had one and don't want to go back, make sure that they do that. In addition to partnering with, partnering women together, we also will provide some support, such as literature related to breast cancer, and we're going to be getting donations of wigs, we've already gotten some, and head coverings, and even items that, you know, if you're unfortunate enough to get a diagnosis of breast cancer and you have to go through chemotherapy, we're going to give away some items to take to those appointments to make that as manageable as possible. Someone did that for me, and I can't tell you how warm and loving that felt to receive such a gift, and so I paid it forward, and I recently came across someone who needed the same thing as me, and I mailed it to her, and she probably felt, and as she expressed in a letter, the same way that I felt. Not that you couldn't afford to go out and buy yourself those little items, but it was nice to know that someone was in your corner and supporting you in that. So the foundation itself will be accessible within the Tawny Town Community Partners building, as she had mentioned, at 52 East Baltimore Street, and we do hope that some of you will come out and just peek your head in the door and come and see us and talk with us and find out more about how you may be able to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we head into other items on the agenda, I wanted to go ahead and commemorate some outstanding individuals who helped save a life here recently in the Tawny Town area. We have Kevin Swain, who was a resident who does fire out of Annapolis, Fire and EMT out of Annapolis, and he just happened to be in the right place at the right time to help save a life. In addition to that, we had, and pardon if I say any names wrong, David Breitman, Louis Stiffer, Brandy Lookingbill, and medical director Dr. Kemp, who were all there to help save the life that was saved that day. They received a certificate from the Tawny Town Volunteer Fire Department, and I presented Kevin Swain with a certificate of recognition for his outstanding, like just stepping up and saving a life that day. Not everybody can do it, and again, you never know what's going to happen as you're out there. So I do appreciate what they did, and I do appreciate our first responders who helped save that life. So thank you. Next up, we have public hearing, fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget and constant yield tax rate. So Jim, am I going to go ahead and open that up for?
Sure. Would you like a real quick highlights?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
While we're waiting for folks to come up. So the tax rate at 37 cents per hundred has not changed. We were able to also keep the water and sewer rates the same at 7.25 per thousand for water and 14.24 per thousand gallons for sewer. The general fund total budget is $8,052,296, and the utility fund is $68,806. We had a budget workshop on April, I'm sorry, on March 27th, where we ran through things in some detail, and the budget was introduced officially on the April 8 council meeting. And so we're here tonight to hear any comments that folks have on the budget. It's also been on the website and made available in hard copy since it was, since the budget workshop.
Is there any member of the audience at this time that would like to come say any words on the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget and constant yield tax rate? If not, I'm going to, it's going to remain open until the end of this meeting, so feel free if you do want to talk about it. I'm going to continue down the agenda. Next up, we have council member statements regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Do any council members have any statements to make? Hearing non proceeding down, public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Anybody in the audience have any public comment pertaining to non-agenda items?
Two quick ones and not confrontational. Harry Mead, Baumgardner Avenue. The first one, just because it's across the street from my house, I noticed that there was a new speed sign put on Baumgardner. Unfortunately, by the time you actually can see what it is, people are already slowing down to stop. I think it might be in the wrong place to catch the people that are going over top of that hill that is probably where we're trying to get. So that might be a consideration, not looking for an answer, just throwing it out there that it might be a consideration because you might be able to see something flash, but you can't know, you have no idea what it is. And second, don't know if it's been done before, again, just throwing it out there. For the developments and things, are we doing some form of like impact fee or something like that? Because just to help us get the infrastructure that we need with bringing all the people of like the two big, two big possible communities on the other side of 194.
Jim, did you want to touch on that at all?
The city does charge water and sewer benefit assessment fees, so essentially impact fees for every new user, or a new dwelling, or a commercial or industrial user that creates additional demand on the system. So those monies go into a fund to basically be used for capital improvement projects, things that increase the capacity.
Okay.
So we tend to invest to create the capacity, and those impact fees help pay us back.
As I say, it crossed the mind, so figured I'd at least come and ask.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience for public comment pertaining to non-agenda items? Hearing none, I'm proceeding down the list. We have nothing for resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. We have nothing up for introduction. However, we have stuff up for adoption on Monday. That'd be ordinance 01-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget. Comments, questions, concerns from council.
I know you said that there was no reason in the email to put that off, considering we have a closed session after that. I still don't wonder if maybe we shouldn't just postpone it until June to keep things very straightforward. I mean, I don't see any reason to postpone any of the others because those aren't relevant, unless maybe can we get a closed session before the meeting on Monday? I mean, is that a possibility?
I can certainly reach out to the city attorney and see if he would be available beforehand.
I mean, that way.
I can let everybody know by email what his response is.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council?
I had just need of a clarification, I guess, on our $7 million utility building that we're planning to build. That's in the 25 budget, I assume. Has the entire $7 million been budgeted? Or I mean, I know that you had mentioned that there was the possibility of significant grants available to help fund this project. I would be very uncomfortable in budgeting $7 million for this project and then somehow crediting the grants if we get them, when we get them. So I just, can you clarify how that's structured in the budget?
We do have money in the capital budget, broken up between water, sewer, and streets to fund the project. We've been in touch with the local infrastructure funding program through the state. The project would qualify for that, so we have the ability to take out a loan for that using that program, which typically has lower than market rate interest rates. We have reached out to a consultant that is exploring grant opportunities as well. So right now, we are committed to the design of the building, and that will yield a firmer construction price as well as for the site improvements. Now, whether we pull the trigger and execute the final contract to construct or not, I think is going to be dependent upon what we learn when we get closer as far as the loan payments and/or any grant opportunities that the consultant or DPW has located. So right now, we are committed to the design, but not construction. But we did put money in the budget so that if the stars align, so to speak, we have the ability to do it. So it's budgeted.
So we have money in the budget for the design.
Well, the money for the design has been committed. We awarded, we approved a proposal for that last month or maybe the month before.
Thought so.
Right. So that's committed. Money is in the budget to fund at least the start of construction, which could happen in FY '25.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is how much money do we have? I mean, I guess I could pick through the budget and come up with it, but if you don't want to be, it saved me a lot of work.
We've allocated the full, the full construct, the worst-case scenario. So we've put the entire amount in the capital budget. I think, I want to say it's 2.8 in water, 2.8 in sewer, and then the remainder in streets. So that's kind of our doomsday projection is if we were to fund it all without any grants or without getting a loan.
Again, I, I'm not sold on that full project, and that's my concern. If marijuana tax dollars are helping pay for it, it's one thing, but if Tawny Town tax dollars are paying, taking the whole load. I've got some other questions. So I don't know that I could support a fully funded project, so I just, that's what I want to clarify.
It is in the budget, but we haven't awarded a contract, so that will be the final go, no-go point for it. So the money will be there if we decide to move forward with construction. And we might, we might consider a phased approach and do site work and spread it out over a couple of years even, or defer the construction of the building. We're not committed to, we have money in the budget, but until we award a, until we, until we approve the construction contract, we're not committed to the actual building itself.
There's no doubt that we are in desperate need of a facility. My only doubt is how we're going to pay for it.
Sure.
So we have the design, the site design itself, that's already moving forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
We could, like you said, we could phase it into a site package, then come back and if there's any possibility of phasing the building itself, we could look into doing that.
Right. And right now, the plan is, you know, we've been working through a cooperative purchasing entity, Sourcewell. Morton Buildings is a Sourcewell contractor, so the, basically the services and materials and everything have been pre-bid, pre-vetted. So we have the opportunity to move forward with that, or if we wanted to seek other bids, we certainly would have that option as well. Now, if we do stick with the Morton team who is doing the design, we get credit against the cost of the building for the money that we've invested in the design. So, you know, once that design is done, we have some decisions to make.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none, proceeding to the next item, ordinance 02-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 water and sewer rates. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
We're able to hold the line on the rates. I think that's fabulous and good work by the Works.
Hearing none, proceeding further down, ordinance 03-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 tax rate. Comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward to resolution 2024-07 water allocation for May. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Didn't we allocate a EDU last month to Recovery 180? I see it again on the report this month, but I thought we did that last month.
I will have to check with the zoning administrator and see if they have gotten their zoning certificate for that. The plan was approved. I don't know that they have received their zoning certificate yet.
Did I ask the question about how many it was? And so?
Yes.
That's why I thought that that had already, actually, I thought all of these had gone, were from last month, but.
Right. And they will stay on there until the zoning certificates are issued and the people have paid the benefit assessments.
Okay.
So they go on that part of the resolution once they've gotten to the point where the zoning administrator can issue that zoning certificate, and then they'll stay there until they actually get their permits.
Gotcha, okay. Now I understand.
Additional comments, questions?
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding down, city manager report?
Okay. Let's see. So we have, under capital equipment, we have included the VAC truck we talked about a little bit in the proposed FY '25 budget. There's been a lot of criticism of late of the street sweeping performance, and over the last, last month or so, it seems like it's gotten worse. You know, previously, it seemed like they were doing an acceptable job, but the last, last couple of months, they've not been getting up against the curbs, and they've been just not, not performing as well. They, they sent different drivers out, and, and that hasn't really yielded improvements. So, in the event that we do want to consider taking this on ourselves, Public Works has investigated costs for equipment, if we did want to do street sweeping in-house. So that would give us the opportunity to do more frequent sweeping. That yields some National Pollutant Elimination, Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, permit credits, if we do enhanced street sweeping, which is more than once a month. And DPW does think that they currently have the manpower that they could take that on. So, just, just so you're aware, that DPW, Public Works, has been looking into the idea of taking, bringing it in-house instead of contracting out. So, just something to think about. There's some information, I think, in your packet about the VAC truck that Public Works has been looking at, and I'm sure that there will be other equipment that we can take a look at, at the municipal league conference this summer as well. So, something to be on your radar screen, and, you know, we'll see if the performance improves over the next month or two. And, if not, we'll start having those conversations, I guess, or continue those conversations.
Have we looked at any used equipment? I'm thinking of the bucket truck that we picked up a few years ago, what a very reasonable price, and it served as well. This is the kind of piece of equipment I would think would be similar, that it doesn't get used every day, and you ain't to spend full price for a new piece of equipment if there's a good used one on the market.
And, and certainly, the idea of letting somebody else take the initial depreciation hit is, is something to consider. I think Public Works is concerned about a used piece of equipment because of the complexity of, of the vehicle, that, that they're very concerned about, you know, lack of warranty and things like that, for some, for a piece of equipment like that.
I certainly can appreciate that. I mean, I, I know that it's probably a piece of equipment that really gets abused in its normal life, because of the work that it does. I just throw that out as a suggestion.
And that, that concern-
I'm, I'm one of the few, probably, that remember our first street sweeper that we purchased. And it was well undersized, and really just never, that object never got off the ground. I thought it was a good idea 30 years ago, and I think it's a better idea today, but just offering a suggestion that, that maybe a used one might be available.
Right. I mean, certainly, they can explore that option, and, you know-
I'm sure they do.
If we, if we decide to, you know, to move forward with it, we'll, we'll have a recommendation from them, one way or the other.
Jim, is this piece of equipment multipurpose, or does it only sweep?
It does have a, I guess, essentially, a vacuum tube that can be detached and used to, you know, suck things up from the gutter, or, or the curb, as well.
And I thought that the one I was looking at, it could do leaves, yeah, it could do leaves and other functions as well. It's just, there may be attachments that have to be purchased later.
Right.
I think that that actually is one of the, if I remember looking at this, it was an attachment, an option attachment for the VAC hose, yeah, the 5, the 5.9-inch VAC hose attachment. So, yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's quite the, the one that, that some municipalities use, where they have their residents just blow leaves to the curb and then come by, I think, I think-
Yeah, this isn't large enough for that, but-
Right. I, I don't think that's what we're talking about with this one.
But I think you could occasionally suck off the leaves off of a storm drain or something like that.
Yes, exactly.
If it's, it clogs the storm drain up.
Yes, that, that is an option with this piece.
That's kind of what I think they were looking for there. All right. I, I think it's a good idea. I think a piece like this, in the hands of someone like our, our Public Works Department, a machine like this could last almost 20 years. You know, the problem with buying machines like this off a used market is, you know, the sweeper, you know, we do a lot of milling and paving, and the sweeper companies that send out the milling machines are dented up and bent, and they, you know, if you're doing, you know, they do get a lot of overnight work, and, and don't necessarily get the most careful drivers that come in and do this kind of thing on the overnights. So, you do have to be very, very careful about buying one of these on a, on the used market.
I mean, plus, it gives us, again, our own accountability for getting it done.
Yes. And I, I, yeah. Unless there was a really, really low-hour machine somewhere that was, you know, for sale cheap, or off at, at auction, that, you know, sometimes those things slip through the cracks at auctions or whatever, but, you know, unless it was a really-
Maybe a rebuild machine.
Or re, right. Something that came with a little bit of a warranty, yeah, a rebuild that came with a warranty, something like that would be good, but, like I say, I think, I think a machine that would be well-maintained by our Public Works staff would be something that would last us quite a while.
So, really food for thought at this point. You know, when, when we had these discussions many years ago, and decided to continue outsourcing it, there were concerns about the upkeep of, of the sweeper and things like that, as well as the manpower. You know, we've, as the city has grown, the department has grown a little bit, maybe not quite to keep up, but manpower-wise, they think they can accommodate it. So, just something to keep in mind, and, you know, we can make a decision in a couple months. And now, you know, we do have an existing contract with Sweeper, however, so we need to have that conversation also, if council wants to make a change, as to, you know, how we would, how we would handle that. Moving on, charter and code review, just ongoing discussions. I, I did mention last month about updating the code to recognize the information technology area as a, an official city department. And I would like to get some consensus, one way or the other, on that by Monday night, so, unless, unless anybody wants to do it now. But, like to see if, if we want to move forward with that. Basically, we need to update the code to list that as a department, and-
That seems to be a fairly minor change to code, to do that.
It's, it's pretty quick.
No, it's basically just fixing something that's already-
This makes sense. Have you put a budget on it? Have you compared with what, with the cost that one way versus the other would be?
So what we have typically done, when we have moved a position from hourly to salary, is we have basically looked at what we've budgeted for that particular position for overtime, plus the, the regular salary. And since it would now become a, a salary rather than hourly position, and wouldn't get overtime any longer, basically, we've looked at the sum that that person would be likely to make, and then we match that up to the closest thing on the level in step chart, so that they're essentially making what they would make, what they would be projected to making the current year anyhow. So, budget-wise, it's kind of a wash. I mean, it'll be, it'll be, you know, maybe a few hundred dollars to make it match up to one of the, one of the steps on the chart, but, but the, the net effect for the budget's going to be nothing.
Did council want to do a consensus now, or wait till Monday?
I don't see any reason not to, not, not to proceed. Anybody else have any comment on that?
We should do it.
Any additional comments?
Okay.
Consensus good on councils, and?
Well, I mean, it's, it's simple enough that maybe, well, we'll see if we can throw something together quickly enough to get it out to you guys over the weekend to look at. So it shouldn't be a huge change. I just don't know if the city attorney will have a chance to review it before Monday.
Yeah. But it would just be for, for introduction on Monday.
Introduction, yes.
So, yeah, I don't see any reason not, not to proceed on that particular item. Then while we're talking about charter and code, it brings to mind something that I had asked about some time ago regarding kind of, some, some kind of lower-level approval process for site plan waivers, and, you know, right now, it's either a site plan waiver, or it's spend at least 10 grand. And trying to figure out what we can do in between there, because, you know, we, we approved, for example, the pizza place down the street as a, as a waiver, because we wanted to help and work with them. You know, now they're, have substantially more parking than anybody talked about, and, and, where, you know, they're all parking on the grass and stuff down there. So, not that that's a huge thing, but I think that if we'd had a process in between, they might have been able to get the size lot that they really needed.
Yeah.
As opposed to trying to cut it down to fit into the waiver.
And they, they actually did do a site plan. They were just trying to stay under the 5,000-square-foot threshold to not have to do stormwater management. So they didn't, right, they didn't actually get a waiver.
Okay.
But their-
But they're still, I mean, but you, you knew where I had it.
Their parking estimates were probably a little low, from what they informed us. So, okay. Moving on to the construction projects, Roberts Mill Road, Broad Street, all the yards have been kind of fine-tuned and reseated where needed. We are still waiting for the paving contractor to confirm their approach for the repairs. We have some areas, especially on Roberts Mill Road, where the, the blacktop just didn't adhere to the base course. So, the paving subcontractors come out, met with, with our water superintendent to talk about options, but we don't have a date yet for the repair, or, or final confirmation of how they're going to execute the repair. But we should have that in the next week or two. Stormwater, still kind of struggling with the Riffles Lane. Been back and forth with the design engineer to try to get them to make some tweaks to the easement plat, based on comments the city attorney had. Been playing phone tag with them, but we're still hoping to get the request for proposals out, and be able to have something before you next month to hopefully award a bid for that. The sewer rehab project for this year, the design work is still ongoing with CDM Smith. Had a meeting with them last week, and things are moving on target per the schedule, but this is a project that the construction is definitely going to, you know, carry over into FY '25. But, the design approach seems solid, and, yeah, work is progressing. So, so far, they're staying on the, on the target for what was in their proposal timeline. And, let's see. Before I move on, two other things, just a couple of quick notes. I probably should have mentioned this when we were talking about the, the budget, but just to kind of put things in perspective, sometimes we hear comments about how many thousands of dollars people pay in taxes, and, you know, and talking about the services that the city provides. And just by way of illustration, because a lot of folks don't realize, maybe the breakdown between county and city tax, at our tax rate of 37 per 100, a home appraised at $300,000, which is, you know, we've got a lot that are under three, that are in some of the older neighborhoods, including recent construction, although the, the really new stuff tends to be over that $300,000 mark. But that seemed to be a good average point for the city. At any rate, that house would pay about $1,100 a year in city taxes. So, that's just, just to kind of put a little perspective on things. And lastly, for me, it's planning a little bit ahead here. Our Independence Day celebration is scheduled for July 3, and that happens to conflict with our July workshop date. So for Monday, if, we might want to do a little planning ahead, decide if we might want to have a single meeting, maybe do a combined business meeting workshop in July, so that council can participate in the, the July, well, July 4th celebration on the 3rd.
I have no issue with anybody else.
It looks pretty good consensus that-
So shoot for one meeting in July. Just go for the Monday meeting. Okay. Great. Thank you. And that's all I have, unless there are questions for me.
I have a couple of questions. The attached at the end of our packet this month, was I assume that this is the five-year capital improvement draft list, project list?
That is, yes.
Okay. This couple of questions that I have, just, just quickly going through it. In FY '25, we show some-
Councilmember Tillman, that is on the agenda later today.
Oh, ah, I'll table that till later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, my fault for not reading all the way down on the agenda. Okay. I do have, I do have something else that I would like to bring up, and, and I know that this has been a contentious point, but I, I kind of want to, want to bring this around to try to get this to, to an end. We have talked about Main Street, and certainly, the, the last meeting went much better, was, you know, some of the contentiousness hopefully has, has gotten away. But I still, you know, when, when I started looking into this, I, I was looking for the answers to three questions. I wanted to know how much funding Main Street got, where that funding came from, and, and where the money went, what it went, what it went, was spent on. And I still really don't have any of those answers. I think I've got a partial, or most of an answer regarding how much money, by sifting through the reports, but there's no real detail about where it comes from, and, and a lot of, not much detail about how, how, where it was spent. And my whole point in, in asking for all of this, and I'm not trying to rehash the past, and neither am I trying to play any gotcha games, it's not, that's not what I'm trying to do here. We've been, we've tasked that, that, the Main Street Advisory Board with trying to come up with budgets, but really haven't given them any kind of framework to work within. It's kind of hard to develop a budget if you don't know where you've, what you've spent, or what you, what you have for monies to spend. So I, I kind of, I see that as kind of a, like a lost exercise, almost. The other thing that I am, am interested in, in, in doing, and I've discussed this, and the mayor and I have discussed this before, where we've talked about trying to have the Main Street Board as, as a separate entity, the way that it is done in a lot of other communities. And I think that we probably should do that, because I, there is a fear out there among some of the people involved in the Main Street, and not just the big people in the Main Street Committee, but the businesses on Main Street, that there has been co-mingling of funds, and uses that didn't necessarily go directly to Main Street, and to the businesses and the people there. So, I would like to see, you know, the idea was, how much money is there? Is there money to, to, for this program to be self-supporting? And I can't really get to that answer without some more information.
Well, I think the, the quick answer is no, there is not funding for Main Street to be self-supporting at this point. Main Street is reliant on the city to provide the funding for a Main Street manager. I don't believe that the ledgling board that we have in place now has the ability right now to fund a 30-hour-a-week position for a Main Street manager that would be independent of the city. I think that's a very worthy goal. I think eventually, we might get to a point where the Main Street- I think eventually we might get to a point where the Main Street program has, I'll say, matured to the point that they have, you know, their own revenue sources, they're doing fundraising and they're able to fund a Main Street manager's position. I think that would be awesome if we get there, but I don't think we're there yet.
No, I don't, I don't believe we are there yet either, but in order to take those steps to get there, we need to figure out, you know, what do we have? What are we working with? And, you know, the information that, that we've received to this point doesn't get us there. And I don't know if there, if there may not be any more information to give me, and if that's the case, that's unfortunate. But I would at least like to know, you know, are we, are we getting all of the funding we should be getting? And what are the potential sources for more funding? And what can we be looking to do to, to improve that? I, I know that the people in the Main Street Advisory Board, everyone that I've talked to, which is pretty much everybody on the board except for Keith Jr., who I don't see much, so I don't talk to him. You know, they all kind of want to go in that they, they, they want to bring this alive and they want to move this forward. And with, I, I, I just think we need, we need to continue looking at this and, and working forward.
Can I, can I ask a question? I'm just, I'm a little confused about, and I know I kind of replied in an email, just, you know, the whole purpose of this committee was to kind of start fresh and not keep thinking about what we did in the past. And I kind of feel like, kind of the purpose of this board is to find ways to get that money, not just be handed a, a cash bag and say, here, this is what you have to work with, and this is how much you have.
And I'm not disputing that.
Right, so.
But it, it, it would help to know what the sources were before, so we know, all right, you know, can we expect this every year from this people and this from this people?
But I think so much has changed since then, that a lot of those places we cannot expect money from, and there are other new avenues that we could be following. If we're too focused on the past, then we're not opening the doors to look at what we have in front of us. So again, it would just, to me, this would be like, forget that we even had one. This is a brand-new entity. Let's start fresh, find the money and, and have that board, that's what they're, that's what, to me, they're there for, is to figure out how they want to spend that money, you know, where it's coming from, what the priorities are. You know, again, I, I can't, to me, it's kind of like when, you know, when I was on the PTA and it was like, well, this is what we did last year. Well, sometimes, forget what you did last year, this is what we're doing this year. We may have a better outcome. If we don't, then you learn and you move on. But it just seems, watching some of those meetings, there was a little too much of, again, looking behind us. I think we need to stop looking behind us and, and kind of move forward and, and, you know, go from there. And I think.
Well, part, as, as stated, the committee does need to focus on looking forward.
Oh, I, I don't disagree. But you have to know where you've been.
Well.
And, and, and part of it is there have, there are, you know, lessons learned from, from what had been done.
But I'm not seeing people who are looking to find lessons learned. They need to focus on getting the Main Street Committee going and they need to focus on doing what is best for the businesses on Main Street.
Hey, Chris, I haven't talked to you since, I met with Mish and Jim last week, but I think what Judy has said is, is probably the best thing to do now. If we, if we can get a handle on where we are and what we're doing, and we can be accountable for the funds that we're receiving and spending, that'll be a big step forward because nobody knows whether that's happening or not, just like you say. But I think that what, once we get our arms around that, if, if we need to go back into past years to verify this or look at that, then that would be perfectly appropriate. But my conversation with Mish was that we have to have accountability on the finances for this committee and detailed accountability, not, not just a page with numbers on it. So I, you know, your, your concerns are certainly justified. But I think the immediate question before us is, it's like Judy says, we need to make sure the committee is up and functioning and moving forward. And then if there's issues that, that we find, once we start, once we establish this accountability, that bear going back and looking at the things, we probably should do that.
And Jim, just to check, there was, there was a report filed to the, what, Maryland Main Street Department, and they came back and said that it looks correct?
Yes, the, the reports submitted to Department of Housing and Community Development are focused more on, I guess, kind of the metrics of the program. They're looking at the, the volunteer effort, they're looking at jobs created and investment in the downtown. They're not really, you know, looking to reconcile for the organization. So those reports aren't really.
But they believe the program is being ran correctly.
It's, it's not like we, we, you know, for city funds, we have our, you know, our auditors come in and they review our financial statements every year and, you know, select sample transactions to review and everything to make sure our, our controls are, are solid. Main Street has never, the Tawny Town Main Street has never really done that. That, you know, we've, we've for many years kind of gone through the community foundation and those funds are separate from the cities. And, you know, just, just to kind of frame things for folks who may not be as involved or aware of the city's Main Street, I'll say, history. Since before COVID, the city has not had an active Main Street Board. So frankly, I'm surprised that the state did not revoke our designation during the time that we didn't meet the criteria for a Maryland Main Street. So in that period, we have done things under the overall umbrella of economic development to kind of keep the lights on and keep some activity going that we can report into the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I've, and Judy, thank you for paying attention to my highlights reports. But, you know, I, I've been trying to emphasize that, you know, looking back at the last couple of years is really not going to be particularly instructive for the new board because of the way we've been doing things, lacking a board is, is not the model we want to follow. Now, I, I understand there are concerns about, you know, what, what kind of revenues can we really expect? You know, what, what expenditures have we had in the past to kind of get some, get a feel for where you've been? I, I totally understand that. But I don't think the, the last couple of years provide a really good snapshot of what the program is, is about. And unfortunately, well, our, our financial records retention for the city funds is three years. And now we can go back with some system records farther, but all the supporting documentation gets destroyed after three years for anything that goes through the city finance office. You know, we haven't had a Main Street Board for almost five years. So, and admittedly, going back, trying to find records from the previous Economic Development Director has yielded not a whole lot of, of detail. So we've pulled together what we can, and if there are some specific things, you know, I, I don't mind staff spending some time looking into it, but I, I just question the, the value of spending the, the amount of time it would take to like reconstruct ledgers for previous years and things like that, when what we would be constructing isn't really the example we want to follow. So it's, you know, I, I understand the, the desire to have some background information, but I, I don't know that it's going to be as informative as, that it's going to be worth the effort to go back and try to recreate things.
I think if, if the lesson learned out of it is, is about fixing our processes.
Yeah.
Then that's maybe worth the time spent to this point. And again, I'm not, I, I don't want to dwell on the past. I just trying to use, trying to find that information to, to inform how we can move forward. You know, it, I, 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 of course, take a special interest in this because it directly affects me and my business and my, and my personal, you know, my, in my real life. So it's, it's, it matters to me. So I, that's why I take such a, a personal interest. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here because that, that horse is already rotting away. So let's take the, you know, what we've learned from this and, and move forward with the type, type of, of controls that, in, you know, independent oversight that the program is supposed to have.
And we can, we can certainly make a point to be sure that for the upcoming board meeting that, you know, we do provide an accurate snapshot of where we stand fiscally right now, you know, what monies are available, you know, what's in the kitty now, what's in the FY25 budget from the city, what, if anything, do we expect from the state, you know, to be awarded to the program? That, you know, I think the city's level of funding has been pretty consistent. The state has kind of changed how they've funded the program, you know, from time to time.
Right, they're now to a $25,000 per municipality set.
Right, so that, and, you know, that, that's the current approach.
Yes.
But, you know, there's no guarantee that, that that's going to be an ongoing source. But, but we can certainly, you know, make sure that the board has that snapshot so we know, you know, where we are at this moment in time. And the plan also is to go back to the beginning of this calendar year and provide monthly financial statements for the board to review and hopefully approve. And I know the Main Street Manager has met with the Organization Committee Chair to talk through what, what the expectations there are for the financial reports. So I, I do think that going forward, we have a good plan in place and, you know, my, my hope is that on a monthly basis, the Main Street Board will review the financials just like you do for the city financials and, you know, have that accountability. And, you know, doing it month by month and keeping current on it makes it a much more, you know, reasonable level of effort. So I think, I think we're, I think we're on the right track at this point and can certainly make sure that the board gets that, you know, the most complete snapshot we can give them at their next meeting so that, that will help guide maybe their, you know, development of their budget for the next fiscal year.
Good enough.
Jim, did you have anything else, city manager report?
Nope.
Questions, comments, concerns on that? Proceeding forward, question, comments, concerns on department reports. Jim, did you have anything additional to add on any of that?
Answer questions or find answers if anybody has questions on those.
Questions, comments, concerns from council?
Just a question on the IT report. The website and social media data, is that for the month? For like, for the month of April or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. Wow, a lot of people paying attention.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none proceeding forward to legal report. Jay is not with us tonight, correct?
Correct.
Continuing forward to new business, monthly financial report. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
Didn't see anything jump out at me.
Hearing none proceeding forward to accounts payables. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none proceeding forward. Approval of lead and copper rule proposal. Jim, did you want to speak to that at all?
Sure. This proposal that's in your packet is from Arrow Consulting. Public Works, our water superintendent, has been working with them on a couple of different items. They've been helping us out with our grant applications for the PFAS filtration and such. And they are working with some other municipalities. Our water superintendent told me today that he's currently at a, a water conference and said he was talking with a couple of other municipalities, Emmitsburg and Thurmont, who have also worked with Arrow on their lead and copper rule update. So basically, we have to have an inventory of properties that were built before building codes and city codes prohibited the use of lead in water lines. So fortunately for the city, in, let's see, I want to say 1972, probably don't have it scrolled down there, the city was relatively small. You know, much of what we know today as Tawny Town has been built in the last 30 to 40 years. So fortunately, we don't have a huge number of properties that existed when lead was still allowed to be used. But at any rate, by October, we are required to have an inventory of properties that could have water lines that have lead in them. So this proposal will basically help us get there.
Speaking of lead pipes?
Yes, on, on service lines. So, so these are not, these are not the city, these are not the city main water lines. These are lines that are maintained by homeowners that the city doesn't, we, we don't maintain the laterals or the service lines. But over the years, there have been a multitude of materials used since the city had a public water supply. So we have, you know, we have transite, we have galvanized, we have, you know, for the last 30 years, it's been copper, type K copper. We don't, we have only allowed PEX piping in a couple of particular applications that, which have been commercial industrial uses. At any rate, the proposal from Arrow, the scope of services is outlined in there. They're basically going to help us build this inventory and create a GIS layer for us to use that's going to also be able to identify things through our GIS system. They will also help prepare the, the inventory forms in electronic format for us to submit to the Department of the Environment by the due date. So it's a, ultimately, we will need to be test pitting all, you know, all the properties that turn up for this inventory once we establish this. So we can go by building code, building code dates, construction dates. We'll try to pull as much data as we can from Carroll County's permit system because their electronic records go way back before our electronic records do. So we'll get as much of that as we can to try to verify dates, and then that's going to leave us with the inventory of the properties that we need to go out and field verify. So we can use homeowner reporting where they can look at the pipe coming through the wall before the meter. But then we also need to verify at the curb stop on the city side, well, at the curb stop, both sides, the city side and the homeowner's side, what the materials are. So ultimately, the goal is to get all the lead out of the water system. So.
Is this, is this inside the house or is, is there, is that, is that reporting part of this?
This, this proposal is just to get us to that, that inventory of who we need to check.
Okay.
So what happens once the inventory is developed?
One, one second, sir.
Commercial and residential? Commercial and residential?
Yes, sir.
We'll public comment our agenda items here in a second. Sorry, just one moment.
That's an impossible task.
Well, it's not impossible, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, if, once you identify which buildings were predate the, the code, then you can just find those services, dig down at those services. Now that may, where, where the, where the curb stops are in the sidewalk, that may entail tearing up sidewalk.
Who, who's telling us to do this, the state?
It's actually the EPA.
The EPA?
They're revising their lead and copper rule and now they're.
We have to.
Spend money.
Inventory individual residences.
Correct. And, and homeowner, property owners can do self-reporting on the, the, the house side of, the house end of it. But ultimately, if people don't self-report, we'll have to reach out to everybody. So it, it's quite a, quite an undertaking. I, I can only imagine larger jurisdictions that have, you know, tens of thousands of accounts, you know, how they're dealing with this. We're, we're fortunate. If you, if you can picture on a map our, our historic district, basically like the pre-World War II era of the city, so, you know, Middle Street, George Street, East and West Baltimore, York and Frederick Street, basically the, the, you know, the core of the old part of the city. That's where we're going to have to inventory. Most, most of, you know, most of what we know today is the city has been built since 1980.
Is there a point in time where? Is there a point in time where lead pipes for outlawed or stopped? I mean, I got no on lead paint. You go back to 1978. But lead pipes, is there a cutoff date when you no longer could use lead pipes in residential or, or in the building trade?
Yes, there, there was. I believe that was like, I want to say October of 1972.
Good grief.
So, so again, if you think, if you think back to, you know, and I don't know if there's many folks who say grew up in town or were in town in 1970s.
Nobody was using lead pipes in 1972.
But I know, I know when, when I came to the city in 1990, there was nothing north of Roberts Mill Road except for like Carroll Heights, Bancroft Terrace. None of that was here. So basically, all of that development, we don't have to worry about because that was built long after lead pipes were not allowed. So it's really just, even, even the townhome communities were built in the late 70s and early 80s. So, you know, what, what was here before those? So, I mean, it's still, it's still quite an effort, but, but it's manageable for us, I think. But this, this, this proposal basically gets us some expertise of somebody who's been down this route before and helps us make sure we're submitting to the state everything we need to and, and also they have the GIS capability that we lack. So it's going to build a tool for us that we can build on in the future also.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
And on this matter and water, the water budget for the year, we have, through our most recent financial reports that are reconciled are through March 31st. And as of then, we still had 22,625 left for consulting in water. So, and, and this will, this will of course overlap fiscal years as well, but we, we have more than enough to get started this year.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none proceeding forward, approval, approval of proposal Cunningham Recreation for Memorial Park Tot Lot Playground Replacement. Jim, did you want to lead off on that?
This one is also in your packets and it's going to take me a moment to find it again. Okay, so there is a memo from our Parks and Rec director in your packets this month. So we got, our Park and Rec Director has recommended that we, we've, she has researched under those, some of those cooperative purchasing organizations, Omnia and Sourcewell, different playground vendors, and has come up with a recommendation to go with Cunningham Recreation through the Omnia Partner Contract. So it's been prebid for a replacement Tot Lot Playground. And surfacing installation is 122,826. There's a discount through Omnia of 15,211. They'd be charging $2,700 in freight, so our tub, subtotal is 110,41246. We have programmed open space grant funding of 99,83250, leaving the city, city balance to pay, pay by the city 10,579. And in the packet, there is, there are some renderings of the proposed equipment that she'd like to install. So this is replacing the, the Tot Lot that's in kind of the wooded section of Memorial Park.
Yeah, the red and yellow and blue stuff. Now, is that just age, that, the plastics age out in the sunshine?
It's, yeah. It's, it's mostly stuff. Stuff becomes more brittle. The plastic stuff becomes more brittle over time and.
UVs do that to it.
Yep, so even though it's built for, you know, for outdoor use, obviously, you know, the sun takes its toll.
Time, time does.
So that, that will be on for, for your approval, hopefully on Monday evening.
Roger, additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Oh, okay. Jim, I'm going to go ahead and wait for Councilmember Foster to return if that's good with you. So, sorry, a brief pause, y'all.
For those who may be interested, the Baltimore Orioles are currently winning 3-1 over the Washington Nationals.
Not like the sports announcer voice, too. While we are paused, just a, another quick point on the lead and copper thing. When we did our Roberts Mill Road and Broad Street project, we included in the scope of work for the contractor to create a record of the service line material because we had to dig up all of those curb stops and connect them. So we actually have a little bit of a head start on that. So that was, I was very pleased we were able to do that.
Most of those were newer houses, though, aren't they? At least down the one side of Roberts Mill. From there, you know, from.
Probably post, well, there, there are some older ones along Roberts Mill and Broad Street as well, so.
Yeah, Broad Street, I'm sure. Those, those are older houses.
So it's, um. When, when, when our engineer says, says something like, wow, that's a really good idea, I, I feel really proud.
Yeah. Did a project in Virginia years ago where all of the service lines were galvanized from the existing main end of the house. And of course, every time you've touched one of those lines, been in the ground for 100 years, they just break. Those were all bad.
She's probably.
Oh, she's back.
Thank y'all for your patience. Just circling back, approval proposal Cunningham Recreation for Memorial Park Tot Lot Playground Replacement. Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none proceeding forward, contract award THS Park Athletic Field Lighting Installation. Comments, questions, concerns by council?
One was put out to bid. We received two bids as the Parks and Rec Director's memo informs you. Fern Rodkey Electric at 83,499 and Fresh Air Concepts at 124,000. And the recommendation is to award the bid to Fern Rodkey Electric at 83,499. And this, this project also has program open space funding of $51,000.
Roger, for that, additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none proceeding forward to approval of special event permit, Good News Club July 1st through 5th, 2024. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none proceeding forward, FY25, FY30 Capital Improvement Program. Jim, do you want to lead us off on that?
Sure, I just wanted to get this in front of you a little bit ahead of time so that you could look over the projects and there is, no, I'm not sure how it's going to be. Let's see, okay. There's a summary page in the, let's see, in the, the chart addendum. And on that, it kind of outlines the changes for, so tells you what projects we've kind of slid from one year to another. So just to kind of run through the highlights of that, so we, we've eliminated the Stumptown Water Main Extension that had been proposed for the initial Public Works Facility location when we purchased property on Allen Dale Lane for that facility that negated the need to put water and sewer out in Stumptown Road. So, you know, purchasing that property actually was considerably less expensive than running the water and sewer infrastructure out to the, the previously proposed site. We also moved the additional water storage tank back to fiscal year 28. We expect development to be kind of paused for anything substantial for the next couple of years. So ultimately, we may still need that tank just because we want storage capacity for a certain amount of time in the event that we have an extended power failure or we can't keep pumping, you know, if we have generator issues or some worst case scenario. But for the time being, we have adequate storage capacity for where we are and our pressure is holding without a third tank right now.
Would that be, where would, where would that be located? Would that be more like out to that edge of town away from the other two or?
We have talked about a couple of different sites, something in the vicinity of Trevan Inn Road and Antrim Boulevard. The elevation there is, is pretty good and it's, it's distant enough from the other storage vessels, but nothing, nothing definite at this point, so.
The room on the, on the new Public Works property for it?
That, that idea has been considered. I'm not sure about the, the elevation there yet, but our facility isn't expected to take up the entire site. So, so that is an option as well. I don't know, I, I don't know as far as like the layout of the system and tying in there, if there are benefits to it hooking in elsewhere compared to there.
How big is the mains coming in and out of that area?
But just thinking of the, you know, thinking of the site and the fact that it is kind of at a hilltop, you know, it's, it's certainly worth looking at when we get there.
Jim, I had a quick question if you don't mind. On the Stumptown, on the Stumptown Road, do we still have, do we have that down for repaving still?
Streets.
I don't see anything on here.
I don't think we have that listed.
Because I remember hearing concerns over potholes in the area on the road, if I remember correctly, but I might be misremembering, but I thought.
I thought they were talking about Roberts Mill up on this end.
I think we have point repairs intended for that, but not a complete mill and overlay at this point.
Okay.
But, and when I see point repairs, I, we are talking about something that we'll bring a count, a paving contractor in for and not just that we're going to jackhammer and, and patch ourselves. So bigger than that, but smaller than a, a complete mill and overlay.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yep.
What about the downtown parking improvements? It's a little vague.
Yeah, thank you. It's one of my questions.
That's, that's, that's kind of a wish list project. There are some, a couple of underutilized properties in the downtown area that may be, may be conducive to developing a, a small parking lot. With the congestion we have, especially during the PM peak hours at the intersection of Maryland 194 and 140, a lengthened left turn lane would yield some improvement there as far as queuing and backing up, you know, down East Baltimore Street. But that would cost us a number of on-street parking spaces. So we would like to have the ability to develop a small parking lot in advance of losing those parking spaces and lengthening the left turn lane. So, and left turn lanes could be extended or added on 194 where there are none, but it's going to be at the expense of downtown parking. So this project, the idea is to create some off-street parking to kind of offset what we might lose if we lengthen the left turn lanes.
The only, the only concern that I would have is when you have those little parket, parket, what do you call them? Pocket lots, you also have to keep in mind that you are then having cars travel through a lane where people walk and then you're also obstructing the traffic as they try to come out and never fails try to make a left turn instead of, so if, if it's, I mean, is it feasible that we're looking at lots that access the sidewalks to the front, but that you actually exit from a rear?
Yes.
I mean, they have that kind of potential.
The properties that we've been contemplating have alley access and that would be the, the means of ingress egress for vehicles. So we wouldn't have any new curb cuts along Route 140 or, or 194.
Okay.
So, and there, there aren't a huge number of properties that have undeveloped areas big enough to park many cars.
But, right.
So, so that's still, we, we want to have the money available if we have the option to acquire a piece of property for that.
Okay.
You're done?
Yeah, yes, for now.
Antrim Boulevard acquire right of way in, in this fiscal, coming fiscal year? Is there a property we have targeted or, and you know, I, and I understand if you don't want to be specific about that, but I just, the general question.
As far as the capital improvement program, we've been budgeting that, that amount every other year so that we, we have some funds available if a property becomes available. We are in talks with a particular property right now to try to secure some right of way and we haven't talked about any dollar figures yet. So, but the money will be there if, if needed.
Gotcha, I understand, okay. Excellent, all right. I do have a few more questions. Let me, give me a second to page through my.
Okay.
We talked about the new water tank and.
While you're paging through, I'll just kind of run back through the last couple changes from what we approved last year. So we also took out the Stumptown Sewer Main Extension and I just realized I have a typo on the word main there I'll have to take care of. Again, this is in draft form. And we moved the, we pushed back the Police Department Building Addition by, by one year and we'll be, you know, having the conversations with the chief now that we have a chief on board as to the necessity or priorities there. Memorial Park Expansion carried into FY25. The Tot Lot also carries into FY25 because we need to wait for the Board of Public Works to approve the open space funding. And the THS Park Softball Field Lighting is also sliding to fiscal year 25. So, and, and one last thing that didn't make this list because it was after the packets were due is we also broke out, Westview Drive is on there just as a water project, but to be consistent with some of the other things where we were going to have really major amounts of street repair related to a water or sewer project, we, we're going to split that out so that we're splitting the, the road reconstruction cost out and putting that under streets and then just leaving the waterline part underwater. So, and we do have a more, a more current cost projection on that one, so that one's going to change a little bit in the final draft. So those are kind of the highlights and for next month, we will have the executive summary finished that kind of highlights the overall program, how much we're spending in water, how much in sewer. And that'll be in, ready with the resolution for you for next month.
You, you were talking about the Creamery Building and the police station, and just kind of a, a wild hair idea to think about, instead of spending a million dollars on renovating the police station, a thought occurred to me about taking down the Creamery Building and building a new police station at that spot, and then selling the existing police station, which would make a great little restaurant. You know, or, or some other, you know, some other use of that as, or as a city hall, move the city hall annex out from across the street and put it down there and sell that building. You know, options that are out there, just think outside that box of just redoing that building and maybe giving something more functional, instead of trying to work within that, that box. You know, and if they need more space, well, then maybe we build a new building and do something else with that. Kill a couple of birds with one stone there, as it were. So, that, okay, I'm done now.
Okay.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council regarding the FY '25, FY '30 Capital Improvement Program? Hearing none proceeding forward, approval of comprehensive plan consulting proposal. Jim, did you have any remarks on that?
This was kind of a challenging decision to make, because the firms that provided proposals both, you know, they both had their strengths, and they're really, as I said in my recommendation memo, you know, there really were, I, I won't say it was a toss-up, you know, each, each had their, their merits. And, but ultimately, we, we felt that Aero Consulting was the, the group that we would like to work with. Now, as, as you know, we have money in the current year's budget that could fund the, the beginning of this. And what we have in the FY '25 budget is more than enough to, to cover the proposed cost of 98,845 to get us through the project. So we've been, as you know, been trying to update our comprehensive plan without the support that the county used to give us, you know, for many years now, and we just can't make it happen. You know, we, we managed to get it on the Planning Commission Agenda to talk about a chapter for a month or two, and then we get flood of site plans or, you know, or, or subdivisions, and, and then the effort gets dropped. And then by the time we get back to it, we're kind of starting over. So we really need to get some outside help to help us keep this going, and also somebody that has the, the experience in, in putting one of these together. Because we've, again, the county used to take a, a much bigger role in helping the municipalities update these, and they don't have the capacity to keep doing that.
I'm looking forward to getting the process started.
Questions, comments, concerns by council regarding the comprehensive plan consulting proposal? Hearing none proceeding forward, approval of proposal for Westview Drive Water Line Replacement Design. Jim, did you have comments on that?
Okay. This is a water line that we just talked about from the capital improvement program. This will be probably our last ARPA-funded project. If there are monies left after the West Baltimore Street and Memorial Park sewer rehabilitation projects that the design is ongoing for now, if there are ARPA funds left for that, then Westview Drive will, will basically spend the rest of them. It may end up that the design spends the rest of them, because we, we haven't bid the sewer projects yet to know what, how much exactly we're going to spend on those. So in the packet is, really is a big packet this month. There we go. Is a proposal from CDM Smith, our consultant engineer, to do the design for the replacement water main. They realize the importance of us having the funds committed for ARPA by the end of the year, so they believe that they can meet that deadline. And trying to get down to the dollar amount.
168,800. Yeah. It's one, the total is 168,800.
168,800, thank you, Chris. So that will be on for Monday. If anybody has questions about that, let me know. If I can't answer it tonight, I'll have an answer for Monday.
Questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none proceeding forward, nomination to Board of Zoning Appeals, Steven Nick, and I apologize, Nick, if I butcher your last name.
Kalanock?
Kalanock. Kalanock?
Kalanock.
Kalanock, apologies. He's up for nomination to the Board of Zoning Appeals on Monday. Questions, comments, concerns regarding that?
Yeah, I'm glad to see him, to join the Board of Zoning Appeals. You know, Nick, you've been coming to a lot of the meetings, it's good to see you involved, and thank you for being there.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none proceeding forward, public comment pertaining to agenda items. Does anybody in the public have comment pertaining to agenda items? Did you have anything, sir? I know you were, you're good.
Have I answered?
Once more, public comment pertaining to agenda items? Next, we have last call for the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2024, 2025 Budget and Constant Yield Tax Rate. This is the last chance to come up and talk about it before we close the public hearing regarding that. Jim, please show closed with no public comment. I am looking for a motion of adjournment from council.
A motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Garry, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.